Good evening. Welcome to the September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty one combined work session in regular, in person and virtual meeting. The first item on the work session agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance by the two thousand and twenty one, two thousand and twenty two Student School Board Representatives, Randy Lane and Majabin Topeter.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. The second item on the work session agenda is the introduction of the student board, student board representatives for the Upper Darby High School by the Assistant Principal, Mr. B.J. Hensel.
My name is B.J. Hensel and I'm the Assistant Principal for the class of two thousand and twenty two. I want to thank the members of the board, I want to thank the members of the board, President Brown, the administration, and Dr. McGary for giving me the opportunity to introduce the student representatives to the school board for the class of two thousand and twenty-two. Last spring, multiple candidates submitted a letter explaining why they would like to hold this position. I removed the identifying aspects of the letters and posted them on School G so that the class of two thousand and twenty-two could choose the individuals that they wanted to represent them. I had the pleasure of meeting with the representatives recently to discuss the post, and I'm excited to introduce such mature and committed students to the board. First, I would like to introduce Majabin Topeter. Majabin is an Upper Darby Royal from the beginning. Attending kindergarten at the K Center, she attended Senkow Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School. She plays field hockey and participates in many school activities, including Royal Crest, Royal Revolution, Science National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, Writers, Inc., Mock Trial, Junk to Funk, and the Reading Olympics. Outside of school, Majabin works with TAB, which is the Teenage Advisory Board at the municipal library. They work to increase young people's interest and attendance at the library. She loves plants. Her room is filled with them. She reads a lot, stating that she read almost one hundred and fifty books over the quarantine. She works at Carter's. When she does watch TV, her favorite shows are Criminal Minds and Grey's Anatomy. Her goal is to improve the district for everyone, not just for students and families, but for teachers and staff as well. Our other distinguished school board rep is Randy Lane. She couldn't be with us tonight, so she's coming in virtually here. Randy grew up in Upper Darby School District, beginning first grade at Garreford Elementary. She later moved to Hillcrest Elementary for the fourth grade. She subsequently attended Drexel Hill Middle School and moved up to U D H S. A brief list of Randy's school activities includes serving as the Vice President for the class of two thousand and twenty-two, playing soccer, Royal Crest, N E H S, ROKAPA, Black Students Union, choir and encores, musicals, and possibly the play. She currently works at the Teahouse and in her personal time loves music, dance, poems, sometimes taking a break, writing books, binge-watching shows, and playing with her three dogs, two cats, and fish. She lives in Drexel Hill with her younger brother, older sister, mom, and dad. She wants to make the school district the best that it can be and get more students involved in the whole district and community. So congratulations to Majabin and Randy. Thank you for representing the class of two thousand and twenty-two in the position of Student Representative to the Upper Darby School Board.
Thank you, Assistant Principal Hensel, for that introduction. We really have a good feel for our two new student representatives, Majabin and Randy, so welcome aboard. You have big shoes to fill, and we expect a lot from you. No pressure. Before we call tonight's meeting to order, Dr. McGary, would you please outline the public participation procedures, please?
Yes, Board President Brown, sorry, the cable's a little short. This evening, we have both in-person members in the audience and virtual members of the audience. This evening, we will take comments and questions from in-person individuals first. That will all go way down to the general public comment questions where comments had to be received by seven thirty, and those attending in person had to sign in prior to seven thirty. Comments on specific board reports, obviously, we'll open it up to the board and to the general public before the board takes action here in person. And then we will also check to see if there are any comments coming in from the public, and the public can send their comments in virtually to one of two ways. They can phone it in at six one zero seven eight nine seven two zero zero, extension two thousand, or they can send an email to boardmeetingcomments@upperdarbstd.org. In either one of those situations, it's important that the members provide their name, address, and the specific report they would like to comment on this evening. Again, for these kind of meetings, these general legislative meetings, they're comment-only. Our other meetings are committee meetings are where we take question and answers. Board President Brown, I'd be happy to update the public on that as well.
Please, thank you, sir. Do that at your discretion. The regular meeting of the Upper Darby School District Board of School Directors will please come to order. There was a closed session this evening from five thirty P M. until seven twenty-two P M. for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by the Pennsylvania Act ninety-three of nineteen ninety-eight. For this evening's meetings, there were personnel and litigation matters. Roll call, Board Secretary, Mr. Rogers, please.
Dr. Hague.
Present.
Mr. Des Noirs.
Present.
Mr. War Savage.
Present.
Mr. Neal.
Present.
Ms. Williams.
Present.
Mr. Fields.
Present.
Ms. Mitchell.
Present.
Ms. Curry.
Present.
Mr. Brown.
Present. Thank you, sir. In order to allow this meeting to continue virtually, and as permitted by Policy zero zero three, I move to suspend a portion of the following policy. From Policy zero zero six, I move to suspend language in the section titled Public Participation to remove the words present at a board meeting and thereby allow members of the public to participate through the other means we have provided. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Also, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say aye opposed and state your name for the record. Anyone abstaining, please say aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. Pursuant to the Sunshine Act, as amended by Act sixty-five of two thousand and twenty-one, the district posted this evening's agenda to board docs in at least, at least twenty-four hours prior to the commencement of this meeting. Prior to the proceedings, does the board or administration have any additional items to add or change on the agenda?
Yes, Board, yes, Board President Brown and members of the board, we have a few items that we had to update and make changes to for this evening and add to the report. One is the distribution of ESER funds, compensating staff who were coming in during the pandemic, and it had to be added tonight because tonight would be the last evening for the board to approve the dispensing of those ESER funds. Another agenda item is an update to a student information where a student in the report, it says six thousand dollars a day, and it's six thousand dollars a year. We need to make that typo change. It says a day, and it should be for the year. We have another update that we're asking the board to approve, the Pennsylvania Association of Ballet to use our facility. We were going back and forth with our lawyer and their lawyer to get some agreements with the information and make sure that we had everything up to speed so the Pennsylvania Ballet can use the Performing Arts Center. And then the final aspect is that we were finalizing some of our enrollment numbers as we continue to work out online learning, in-person learning. We will make sure our enrollment numbers were up to date, so we had to add the updated enrollment report to this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. I need a motion to approve the additions to tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor proceeding with the new modified agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is modified, the motion carries, the agenda is modified, and we will proceed with the meeting. The administration is reminded to update the agenda in board docs no later than tomorrow. The minutes of the combined work session and regular meeting of August tenth, two thousand and twenty-one is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please say, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The reporter to secretary, please, Mrs. Williams.
The report of the secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none. Are there any comments from the public? I think it's being done right now.
Everybody here who's in the audience, on the district website, I'll walk you through quickly navigating it. If you go to the Upper Darby School District website.
They're doing it up there.
Okay.
You can just talk through the navigation of what they're doing.
You click, try to find apartments, go to school board. Under school board, you'll see a link to school board meetings. Board docs, if you click on board docs, this is the, basically, the public repository for all the presentations, all the information, all the documents that we've been using, and all that information is made public. So you click on combined work session, regular in-person. Over on the left-hand side, it says View Adjourned. You could click it there and click it on the left. This provides all the information, all the reports.
Use those arrows to navigate from section to section. Okay, are there any other comments from the public regarding the reporter to secretary? I'm sorry.
I just want to add one thing, and I'm just asking anybody that comes forward to make a comment tonight, if you could just please state your name and your address prior to making your comment so that we can obtain that for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Again, are there any comments from the public on the reported secretary? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The reporter to treasurer, please, Mr. Neal.
Thank you, President Brown. Good evening. The report of the treasurer is in the hands of each board member, has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none. Are there any comments from the public? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record.
I abstain, Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you. The motion carries. That brings us to the reporter to superintendent, Dr. McGary, please.
Board President Brown, thank you. I hear this crackling in the background. It reminds me of a kid when my dad was getting ready to put a record on and was getting ready to play, so having some flashbacks to my youth. Good evening, Board President Brown, members of the board, administration, teachers, staff, students, parents, members of the community of the Upper Darby School District. Please join me again in welcoming our new student board representatives, Randy Lynn and Majabin Topeter. Thank you so much. You know, Board President Brown stole my thunder a little bit, but, but the two of you have some serious shoes to fill. Over the last several years, we've had some really outstanding representatives of the student body, and we look forward to your perspective and what you bring to us each month, so we know that you won't hold back, so thank you for being here. This evening, I'll be providing you with an update on our reopening of schools for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, our challenges and successes thus far, facilities update, and quickly celebrate our talented staff and students. On August twenty-fourth, we welcome back new teachers and all of our staff. In total, we have over around seventeen hundred employees and over twelve thousand students, including new staff. As you know, one of our goals is to recruit and retain the best staff, and we are happy to report they are making progress in this area. To date for this school year, we have hired sixty professional employees, and a total of ninety-six staff members have joined our team. It is without question a collective effort to run such a large organization, and I feel blessed to work with an outstanding group of people committed to the Upper Darby School District. I want to thank our transportation staff, our drivers, our trainees, our bus aides, our maintenance and facility staff, our technology staff, our safety and security, central registration, our support staff, including secretaries, teaching assistants, and our P C As, our hourly employees, including noontime assistants, our administration, our board of school directors, and of course, our teachers, nurses, counselors, social workers, psychologists, and all those who work with our students day in and day out. We have a great team of people working here in this district. Following Board President Brown's encouraging and reaffirming remarks during our virtual opening day kickoff, where he reminded our staff, we got this, I focused my words on finding unity and listening to one another and hearing our individual life stories. We should be taking the time to reestablish relationships with one another by trying to put ourselves in someone else's shoes. We recognize that the last several months have been physically and certainly emotionally draining, and we need to make our mental health and social emotional well-being a priority. Included in my opening day remarks were stories graciously shared with me by members of our community, who are parents, stories from our transportation department, facilities department, teachers, and administrators. And I wanted to share with you just a snippet of one such interview I was privileged to do with Dave Olson. For those of you who might not know Dave, he has been the head of maintenance at Upper Darby High School since two thousand and fourteen. He has been working in this district for over thirty years, and Dave is just one of the many dedicated professionals we are blessed to have in our district. Listen as he shares part of his story with us about positively, having a positive work ethic.
My name's Dave Olson. I have been in the district, in this building, like thirty years.
What have you been doing in this building over those last thirty years?
I started out in food service around nineteen ninety. Started as a truck driver and moved into more of the management field of ordering, receiving, reshipping to all the schools in the district. And then I drove a school bus from two thousand and eight until like two thousand and thirteen for five years, and just in the afternoon to help out down there. And then in two thousand and fourteen, thirteen, fourteen, they offered me the head custodian job, which I kind of knew a part of because in the summertime, when food service wasn't active, there was no food service cafeteria, I was employed by the district to work in maintenance all summer long, so.
Okay. So, Dave, I really want to go through kind of who you are, starting from you as a kid to where, how you got to where you are right now. So just humor us with a little bit about who you are and how you got to Upper Darby.
Well, I grew up, I grew up strict. My dad was a Marine Corps sergeant. I grew up in Westbrook Park. I went to Westbrook Park Elementary. I went to Clifton Heights Junior High School, and then I graduated from Upper Darby in nineteen seventy-eight. I applied myself in school. I was, you know, in A P courses, and I did well in school. I liked school, and I like school now. I mean, I enjoy what I do. I like being around the children, and as far as working, I just like to keep the building moving. I mean, I get emails from teachers all day long, this isn't working, or my heater's not working, or my air conditioner's not working, or the trash is full, or I need trash can. Whatever needs to be done on the building, me and my staff, I don't do all this by myself. I have a staff, and we just maintain the building, I mean, like the best we can, whatever. I mean, I have to prioritize sometimes, which is more important than others, but we try to get it all done by the end of the day.
Talk to me about, so you said you were raised by a military father.
Right.
Talk to me about how that shaped you.
He was kind of strict. I mean, I wasn't afraid of my father. I mean, I got along with him. He was my best friend. I actually lost him last May, and it really, I lost half myself. Me and my dad were very, very close. Been fishing since we were little kids. He had a boat all his life. I have a boat of myself, of my own now. But we were just together all the time, very close-knit. He was very handy, and I worked with him when I was a little kid up as his extra pair of hands to hold something while he cut it or. But, and that's what shaped me into, into the maintenance end of it. I mean, I was, I'm very handy myself. I could do a lot in the building. If it's not, it goes to maintenance, but most of the stuff here in the high school, we handle ourselves. My name's on that, and that reflects on me. And I say, that looks good. Who did that? And they say, Dave Olson and his team. It's a reflection on us, what, you know, I'm putting my name on. I actually have a sign in my office, and it says, do a job, big or small, do it right or not at all. And I mean, my father instilled that in me. Why do it twice and spend the twice as much time or having to redo it when take your time in the beginning, do it right the first time, and you move on to the next, next job, so.
You're a happy person.
I'm a real happy person.
Like, it's unbelievable. Every time I'm around you or with anybody.
I'm upbeat.
It's not because I'm a boss, because anybody that you've interacted with, regardless of who they are, they have nothing but positive to say about you.
Yeah.
How do you keep the positive attitude?
I just, I have a, I've always had a positive attitude. I just, I just got to keep, I just keep ticking. I just, I don't know.
How do you deal with people that don't have a positive attitude?
I really, I, that's their choice. I mean, I just, I, I.
You take it personally?
I don't take it personally. I just, I get up every morning. I'm up at four o'clock. I'm in here by ten to six, and I am here some nights to football games till eleven o'clock and back the next morning, and. and it's what I signed up for, and it's a big building, it's a big job, and you have to accept your responsibilities and do your best at your responsibilities. You got to strive to make that work, so.
You take the time to get to know people.
Yes.
How important do you think it is to know who somebody is and somebody else's story in building that relationship?
I think everybody should be on the same level. I mean, everybody's a person. Nobody's below anybody else or anybody, I mean, I work with the teachers. I was just in the classroom a little while ago, and the teacher said, "My room's hot." And I went up, and I, the, actually, the air conditioner was off, so it might have been off from the wintertime, they might have been too hot, I turned it off, or somebody turned it off, but I, I said, "Why didn't you email me two days ago?" She said, "Well, I don't want to bother you." I said, "Well, that's my job. Email me, and I could have been here two days ago and made you comfortable then." And she said, "Well, I know you have a lot to do." I said, "That's what I'm here for. I mean, I'm here to take care of you, but I take care of her, I would take care of a special ed student who needed help in the bathroom. Whatever they needed to do here, I'm going to do for them, and everybody's on the same level, just let's make it work. Let's make the whole thing work." And everybody, at the end of the day, everybody says, "Wow, look, we had a great day here today," and, look, it's, everything's positive. I mean, you get positive out of that, I think.
Dave Olson is a superstar, and after playing this, you know, with our faculty for opening day, and you can see all of these videos on our YouTube channel, and anybody here in the audience or anybody else in the community who wants to participate, to share your story, I think it's important that we continue to build those relationships, especially coming out of the pandemic, but Dave's not here, but if you can, give a round of applause. Dave Olson is a heartbeating school. As excited as we all are and were to return students and staff to our schools for in-person instruction for this school year, the guidance and recommended COVID-19 mitigation strategies continue to present us with challenges for masking, for masking guidance, quarantine guidance, contact tracing, and staffing. And while I recognize masking requirements and guidance frustrates some in our community, we will continue to require masking of our staff and students so that we are able to keep our schools open for in-person instruction. Again, our intent in requiring masking of students, of our staff, is so that we keep in-person instruction happening. That's our goal, for as long as we can, as much as we can, the goal is to keep it open. It's not a political reason, those are the rules of engagement that we're up against today. And we are doing our best to enforce appropriate social distancing between students, but there are times when social distancing is not possible. If our students are wearing a mask appropriately, we reduce, and this is important in the new guidance, we reduce the likelihood of having to isolate students, staff, a classroom, or even entire school. And I would like to thank, right now, our nurses and our administrators, who have been working so hard to keep our schools open, often handling contact tracing after hours and over the weekend, certainly aspects that none of us signed on for when we got into education. So to our nurses and our administrators, BJ, folks like you, thank you so much, and to our administrators here for what you're doing to help in keep our schools open. I realize that we have not started off this year as smoothly as we wanted with respect to transportation. Prior to and during the pandemic, school districts throughout the Commonwealth and nation were and are facing staffing shortages for teachers and bus drivers and hourly staff, and I want to apologize for current delays and disruptions regarding transportation. Although we have communicated changes to transportation to families prior to the pandemic and school year, we realize that we should have done a better job reestablishing our lines of communication, and we should have overcommunicated our enforcement of district longstanding, the district's longstanding transportation policy. It's important that we reestablish that. We should have done a better job communicating and reestablishing our lines of communication, and we should have overcommunicated our enforcement of the district's longstanding transportation policy. We should have done a better job letting families know of our anticipated delays. We continue to face transportation staffing shortages and delays in transportation, and unfortunately, we anticipate that they're going to continue. We continue to do outreach and recruiting to find and hire interested candidates to fill our current needs. We are hosting a job fair tomorrow evening from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. for any who are interested in transportation and even being a crossing guard. Again, I would like to apologize for the inconvenience and disruptions with transportation thus far this year, to the board and to the community. As a district, we are also facing challenges and successes with our facilities improvements that we will be highlighting in an upcoming Finance and Operations Committee meeting. I will begin with some of our challenges regarding our facilities improvements. We are moving forward as quickly as possible with a renovation and expansion that will take place at the administrative offices, will become our new administrative offices where the transportation is located, 8201 Lansdale Avenue. Unfortunately, we've discovered at least 13 underground tanks that we must remediate on that property. We did not know all of those tanks, or these tanks existed, because the district did not have any historical documentation prior to taking ownership of the property so many years ago. The positive is that the district is addressing the underground tanks and improving the overall environment in that area. The district, the district also anticipates full approval to continue to move forward with the expansion and renovation of the ironomic project. As we all know, the district was delayed because there was an appeal by the ironomic neighbors that increased the cost of the project. Also, the timeline has been delayed because of that appeal. We are continuing to move forward with a review of plans to build a new elementary school on the Cardington property, but we want to make sure we are reviewing all potential zoning needs and variances for the project. On August 30th, we held a joint press conference with the Borough of Clifton Heights, announcing our plan to move forward together on the construction of a much-needed new middle school. The district has also completed and continues to complete the following capital improvement projects. Beverly Hills Middle School Phase 1, new bathrooms and new windows, and Bywood Elementary School has new bathrooms. All of these needed improvements are exciting, but they certainly have their challenges. We know the pandemic has caused an increased delay in delivery of certain materials. As I stated, we will be providing an update on our projects during an upcoming meeting. As we continue to work through the pandemic and facilities improvements, we will keep our focus on celebrating the success of our students and staff. And so I would like to take a moment to thank our Science and Social Studies instructional coaches. I was informed by our Director of Curriculum Instruction, Ms. Christine Kelly, that our coaches were highlighted for their instructional talent during a national webinar. The coaches were celebrated for their amazing work and the amazing work they do every day, most recently for their focus on promoting culturally responsive content in our classrooms. Thank you to Ms. Erin Karafides, kindergarten through first grade, social studies coach, Carrie Chait, social studies coach, fourth and fifth grade, and Ms. Joanna Mahaland, a science coach, second and third grade, for all that you do to support our teachers with science and social studies instruction, and for setting the example in promoting inclusive teaching and practices in our classrooms. We're also pleased to announce that several of our youth equity stewardship students, our YES program here at the high school, are finalists in the Pennsylvanians for Fair Funding Art Contest. Three of our middle school students were finalists for the middle school age category. Amaya Austin, I think that's Mr. Austin, former teacher here in the school district, ninth grader now at Upper Darby High School. Josephine Doherty, ninth grader, Upper Darby High School. Mo Toronto, eighth grader, Beverly Hills Middle School. Nezic Abway, ninth grade, Upper Darby High School. Josephine Doherty went on to play second in the middle school age group, and we are so proud that our youth equity stewardship students use their artivism instead of activism to send a message that they are our other YES students, and just how passionate they are about inclusive practices in funding of public education. We also had, had several Drexel Hill Middle School students who placed in the Philadelphia Young Playwrights Festival for the 21-20, 2021 school year, with one exception. These students are ninth grade students at Upper Darby High School now. In the playwriting category, the following students placed. Nasrin Hemdi, second place for his project, "One Step Closer." Brianna Lavin, second place for her project, "Two Spoons." Chelsea Mungo, third place for her project, "Coronavirus Apocalypse." And Audrey Skutin, third place for her project, "Breaking Arrows." In the monologue category, the following students placed. Sidney Myers, second place for her project, "I Still Love." Nistreen Hemdi, third place for his project, "The Way Out." And Lauren Kennedy, third place for her project, "Moving Up." In closing, I want to continue to ask for your support and patience as we build toward opportunity, unity, excellence here in this district. Board President Brown and members of the school board, this concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
From our academy, English learners and extended school year programs were presented. The summer's programming was paid for by the Elementary and Second Ferry School Relief Fund, or ESR. There were no comments from the public that night, and if you would like to review the agenda items, they are listed in Board Docs. Thank you, Mrs. Brown.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. Will I have an update on the August 24th, 2021 Finance and Operations Committee meeting? Mr. Fields, read the summary.
Thank you, Board President Brown. The Finance and Operations Committee meeting met Tuesday, August 24th, virtually held here in the boardroom at 7:00. There were two items on the agenda. First item was informational, it was the Safe Routes to School Initiative update. District administration provided an update on the Safe Routes to School Initiative. These are the walking routes, best walking routes to the different schools in the district. The presentation discussed the methodologies, results, and the communication plan of the initiative. This item correlates with Goal 1 of the Upper Darby School District Compendium Plan. I want to make a note, too, that we're always looking for feedback on these walking routes, so please keep that in mind. Item number two are about five policy updates. These do require coordination. Briefly, Policy 003, on function. Policy 005, organization. Policy 006, meetings. Policy 006.1, attendance at meetings via electronic communications. Policy 903, public participation in board meetings. There are three public comments that are available on Board Doc to be reviewed, and the rest of the agenda items will also be reviewed on Board Doc for that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. The Instruction and Curriculum Report, by President Kerry.
Thank you, President Brown. The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none, are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, please signify by saying I oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying I abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The Personnel Report, please, Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you, President Brown. The Personnel Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. Before I move for its adoption, I do want to congratulate, I know in this report it's not all 96 staff members that have joined our team, but I would like to congratulate those who have joined the Upper Darby family. Welcome to the district. For those teachers who have now made tenure, you're also listed in this report tonight, and I'd like to congratulate you on that. Now I move for the report to be adopted, as stated.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, are there any comments from the public? Dr. McGary, I think you want to make a statement.
Yes, not so much about the report, but under personnel, I figured, you know, former superintendent of schools, Ludacris, was involved in a horrible, horrible car accident about a week ago off of Towne's Blind Road. Good news is, he's been, being moved to a rehab facility, but he suffered some significant injuries, and I wanted to pass that along. I know I see some faces who have known Ludacris for a long time as a community member, and just keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Great, great person for this community, and he's in a tough spot.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying I oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying I abstain and state your name for the record. The Policy Report, please, Mr. Desnoyers.
Thank you, President Brown. There is one policy going through a first reading this evening, that is Policy 204, Attendance. Last month, the board finalized extensive changes to this policy, driven by, driven by changes to state law, and this, the change being considered for a first reading this evening is simply cleanup that was missed, some outdated language is being removed, and these changes must, these new changes must go through a second reading at a future board meeting before they will be implemented. Does anyone have a comment on the, the Policy 204 undergoing a first reading?
Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none, are there any comments from the public? Are you supposed to make a motion for it to be adopted, Mr. Des?
No.
Oh, no? Okay.
No vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay.
No. No, it's okay. It's all right.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, so there are, just a moment, please. As Mr. Fields said a minute ago, there are five policies up for a second reading this evening. Those five policies are Policy 003, Functions; Policy 005, Organization; Policy 006, Meetings; Policy 006.1, Attendance at Meetings via Electronic Communications; and Policy 903, Public Participation in Board Meetings. So the Policy Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
My apologies, Mr. Desnoyers, I was one screen ahead of you. Are there any comments from the board?
Yes, just, I would just like to briefly state, these are, the changes in these five policies are the result of the full board discussion at the July 27 Finance and Operations Committee meeting, and the changes represent an updating of how the board would like to run its meetings, and some significant changes are the fact that we are, the board has made permanent a change that was made in the pandemic, allowing comments to be submitted via telephone and email, and those comments, time allowing, will be read aloud at meetings. This is in addition to, now that we are back in person, allowing in-person comments as before. So there are other changes as well. They are described in the Summary of Policy Changes document that is posted to Board Docs. Thank you, President Brown.
Thank you, Mrs. Desnoyers, and thank you for pointing that out. We are allowing more ways for the public to be engaged, not just the things we implemented during the pandemic, so we're adding to ways to engage with the public. Are there any other comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, are there any comments from the public? Yes, step up, please say your name and your address. Yes, step up. Please say your name and your address.
The Borough 447, Central Road, Princeville. Just one comment, I think that because citizens take their time to come out here, they have to push in the building, I mean, this room. I think you should state that they should get the priority.
I have freedom.
Okay, as long as it's in the, I don't have a copy of the policy, but if, you know, maybe if you could direct me to it, that'd be great.
It goes into 4 Doc, and that change is being, we've implemented with the whole organization.
Okay. Yeah, I, I just thought that was a new policy. So, okay, thanks.
Yeah, and if I could piggyback off Neil, that was of significant discussion, because we felt that if you're going to spend the time here in the meeting, that you should have priority to speak, and since we already have the phone calls and emails written, it would be easier to put that into the record than a person who hasn't spoken yet. And so we wanted to make sure that we heard the public who came out to participate in the meeting, to actually engage in the meeting first. So the board did decide that at our last board meeting, and, and hopefully with tonight's vote, we'll make it official.
Thank you, Mr. Neil. Are there any other comments from the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed, and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain, and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The Supplies Report, Mr. War Savage.
Thank you very much, President Brown. The Supplies Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. Before I move forward with its adoption, I just want to share a quick, interesting note. Board Member Des Noiers had sent me an email the other day, and if you look down at the bottom of that report, he goes on to say, at the bottom of the report, page one, Supplies Report, there is an entry for Distance Learning Data Plan Renewal. Last item in the entry states proposal is in accordance with Massachusetts Telecom Contract such and such, and when we sought that clarification from our board secretary, he was kind enough to respond with this. This service is being purchased off of a Massachusetts purchasing contract that is supported/accepted by the state of, by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Basically, we are piggybacking off of the Massachusetts contract that is currently being recognized by the Commonwealth. Just wanted to add that, and I move forward with this adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? Well, I'll start. Thank you, Mr. War Savage, for walking us through that and explaining that to the public and all of us. Are there any other comments from the board? Hearing none, are there any comments from the public? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed, and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain, and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The Transportation Report, please, Mrs. Williams.
The Transportation Port, Transportation Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public, and I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Okay, and I'll just state, thank you, Dr. McGary, for your comments about transportation earlier. That's truly appreciated, and the attempts of the entire district under your leadership doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board?
I appreciate your comments as well. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, are there any comments from the public? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed, and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain, and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The Facilities, the Use of Facilities and the Donation Report, please, Mr. Fields.
Thank you, Board President Brown. Facilities Report, the Use of Facilities Report, and the Donation Report are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board?
Board President, there's one comment for me.
Yes, Mr. Fields.
Special thanks on the donation report, special thanks to Action Karate on Vermont Road. It's, uh, it's, uh, right there next to the, the Hannigans and stuff like that, and Station Tap. Made a donation to Garretford Elementary for school supplies and backpacks. And I, I just think it's great what a local business does, especially a business that, um, probably really took it on a chin during the pandemic, and so that is, that is really, really appreciated. So, thank you very much.
Did you make the motion? I'm sorry? You made the motion? All right, okay. And it was seconded, properly seconded? Okay. Are there any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, please say aye opposed, and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain, and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The Finance and Budget Report, please, Dr. Haig.
The Finance and Budget Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board?
Is the second correct? Yeah.
Okay, it's been properly seconded. Are there any comments from the board?
I was just going to comment that, that I'm really excited to see that we're going to have a performance of the Nutcracker for our students, which, you know, hosting these, these performances is not, it requires a fair amount of effort and coordination by the district, and so it's great. I'm really excited to see that we've got a performance for our students in, in the contract, and thank, I thank Dr. McGary for, for working on that.
If I can comment, Board President.
Sure, please.
Craig Rogers and Tim Bruno and I spent a lot of time in Kyle Berman. I appreciate Kyle Berman's help in that as well, but Craig Rogers and Tim Bruno, who does a lot of work in the Performing Arts Center, he's continuing to carry that torch forward, as well as with the Pennsylvania Ballet, and we look forward to our fall play and spring musicals as well. But I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Doctor, any other comments from the board? Hearing none, are there any comments from the public? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed, and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain, and state your name for the record. The motion carries. Okay, that brings us to our committee, collateral reports, it's mislabeled, okay. Our collateral assignments. We'll start with the Delaware County Community College. Vice President Curry.
Thank you, Board President Brown. The Delaware Community College released a press release on August 26 in regards to students, faculty, and staff as of January 1, 2022. As of January 1, 2022, the college will require proof of vaccination for all students, faculty, staff, and visitors to the college's campuses. There will be an exemption option for those students who may have reasons for not taking the vaccine. And we will, of course, continue to offer online courses and support services so that the educational progress of students will not be interrupted, Dr. Gates Black said. More information will be released after the start of the semester, and we will work collaboratively and collectively with senior leadership, faculty leadership, and the faculty delegate to develop a plan for moving forward with implementing this requirement. Together, we will overcome the challenges facing us, and we will come out of this pandemic stronger than we were before. And that was from the president of the Delaware County Community College. I also wanted to report that they are having, I'm sorry, bear with me, Westchester University, in partnership with the Delaware Community College, is having an event tomorrow night that will be livestreamed called Moonshot for Equity Initiative, and this is by the Southeastern Pennsylvania Regional Collaborative. It's tomorrow night, September 15, 2021, from 4 to 5, and it will be livestreamed from Pembroke High School, 100 Green Avenue, Lansdowne, PA, and you can find it on their website. Thank you, President Brown.
Thank you, Vice President Curry, for that report. Next is the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you, President Brown. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit School Board meets on the first Wednesday of every month for their regular business meeting, and the second Wednesday of every month for their committee meeting. For this September's meeting, we approved to support professional development opportunities for district and IU staff. We approved opportunities to support education and community partners and families, and we approved to enhance student learning and work experience and support future educators. That's all I have to report for tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. Legislative Counselor Report, Mr. Neil.
Thank you, President Brown. Being in the summer, Harrisburg is a little sleepy right now. Not that the rest of the year they, they get a lot of work done, but we should be looking forward to a few bills this year. One is charter reform for payments. It does not have a number yet. It was introduced by Representative Kurt Soni of the House Education Committee. I just want to remind the board and the public that our own Representative Mike Zabel serves on the House Representative Education Committee, and also Senator Carney serves as the, on the Senate Education Committee, okay? So I look forward to working with both of them and getting this passed. It was endorsed by the Pennsylvania School Board Association, so I, I look forward to supporting them as well. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Neil. I know it's early in the school year, but the Mendenhall Tyson Scholarship Committee, I'm sure you have it all figured out, right, Dr. Haig?
Nothing to report at this time, President Brown.
Okay, thanks. Home and School, Mr. War Savage. I know it's early, but you've been to every school already, right?
Absolutely, yes, sir. Thank you, President Brown. Just want to remind everyone, since it has been at least, what has it, how long has it been since we all, as a district family, physically been here together? It's been like a year, year and a half, something like that. I just want to point out that it really does feel good to visit, and I know this has nothing to do with what I'm about to talk about, but I just want to say, while it's still fresh on my mind and my heart, regardless of whatever is discussed, it really just feels good to capture a little bit of that person, that, that magic that happens when people are physically in the building, because it helps to really digest a lot of this information. For some people who haven't participated in a while, yeah, it is, it is a lot to take in. These meetings do have a lot of information, but a great place to get all that broken down for you, not just on a macro scale, but on a scale that fits your actual school district community, is to be a part of the home and school. And so when I talk about these, in these board reports, so everyone is aware, when we talk about the home and school meetings that I participate in, that's more along the lines of an over-the-top level, because as a school district family, we also understand that it's very important for each individual home and school association to be empowered to deliver the best possible experience it is, whatever that looks like for that particular community. And I'm really encouraged about the conversations that we are about to have, thanks to the, what do we want to call it? The School Board Dan McGary Tour 2021-22, where he's going to be able to basically bring all of these stakeholders together, again, on a home and school level, we're talking presidents and organizers, letting them know what some of the initiatives are that we want to bring, to use to bring together the entire community, not just have certain things happening in certain areas. That's something that we want to make sure is brought up in that world tour, I guess, is what I want to call it. And for anyone who isn't currently a member of their home and school, please get involved, even if it's just to go to the first meeting, just to see what it's like. It's really, really super important, because I can tell you right now, when we also are talking about that quest for equity, you hear that word a lot, equity, equity, equity. We want to be able to make sure that all of our district families, again, benefit from the same experiences, and it's not fair to have certain amenities afforded to certain areas of home and schools that are doing really well, and then others who just need a little bit of a pick-me-up or a boost. So I'm really looking forward to seeing how that plays out, and our Home and School Association is totally behind having this conversation, so I just want to put that out there. Thank you, President Brown.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. War Savage. Technology is next. Kicked out on me. Technology is next. Dr. McGary, so you know I always ask for a report, I always put you on the spot and talk about laptop distribution, hotspots, and stuff like that. So I know it's early, and I know we had to distribute some so that kids can get started. So can you just talk about that a little bit? Thank you.
Yes, Board President Brown, thank you. We've taken to putting out a pandemic mitigation document, and we update it and date it each, each month when there's a change. In that document, parents and families that are here that are in need of a hotspot, there's an explanation of how you can go and get a hotspot. We ask that you contact your social worker or principal in your school. If you need Wi-Fi access in a hotspot, we can make that available to you, if you need that, for your students to engage if they're learning virtually. As we closed out the last school year, other than students who were engaged in summer learning or extracurricular activities, we took our computers back, cleaned them up, got them back ready to go, and as we opened the school year, we're now issuing them back out for one-to-one learning. One of the conversations that we're having, Board President Brown, about that is this idea of, during the pandemic, there was a concern about kids on their computer too much, and being in school, and being on the computer a lot, but we are navigating more towards using that technology and getting used to taking the computer to and from school with students. So we're still working on navigating the comfort level with that, but we are one-to-one district now as a result of, of the extra dollars received during the pandemic. So every student has a laptop, and we're excited about moving forward with that. We have not ramped up our giving out of the hotspots yet, but I'll be sure to give you an update as parents need more of that access.
Thank you very much for that report. Next is PSBA, Mr. Des Noiers, Mr. War Savage, or Vice President Curry, anything PSBA-related, any of you?
Okay.
I, I guess I'll go and just say, in a few minutes, the, the board members are going to vote in the PSB, PSBA officer elections, and I should congratulate our own President Brown, who is up for election to a PSBA officer position. So congratulations, President Brown.
Thank you.
I suspect you're a landslide, by the way.
Not what I wanted you to do, but okay. Policy Liaisons, Mr. Des Noiers, or Mr. Neil? Anything for policy?
Yes, I have something. So the, the board this evening approved changes to, I believe it is five policies. Those are the policies that are on the Policy Report second reading, and they govern meetings, and those, as I mentioned when that report was being considered, those changes were originated from board members and, and incorporated changes into the structure of meetings that the board itself wanted to see. At the same time, this board meeting, there were a couple of things different than our last in-person meeting prior to the pandemic, such as voting on the change additions to the agenda, and the fact that the agenda now has to be posted 24 hours in advance. Those changes are driven by, as someone said, changes to the Sunshine Act that were implemented with Act 65 of this year in the, at the Pennsylvania state level. And so, starting next month, the board will consider additional changes to the same policies for which we approved changes tonight that will bring our policies into compliance with changes in laws, so that, to get details on these, these additional changes to how we're going to run meetings, or how we are running meetings, members of the public don't have to look up Pennsylvania state law. Thank you.
And President Brown, if I may, I, I would like to thank the board and the administration and their team for the work this past summer regarding these policy changes, and really the rest of the meetings, because some school districts, many people may not know this, actually sometimes skip a month or two in the summer. But here in Upper Darby, we are going through all summer twice a month, so I just want to say my appreciation and thank you to the board and the administration for working hard throughout the summer. Seems like we never get any vacation time, but we're here because we care about our students, and we want to make sure this is the number one school district in the state. students and we want to make sure this is the number one school district in the state. So thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Okay, I think that's it for, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Hag? Yes, I was ready, I was going to call on that next. Okay, you was getting ready. Communication, well, first I want to say thank you for the work you and Mrs. Mitchell, Dr. Hag and Mrs. Mitchell did last year on the communications report. That was a lot of work, that's extra work, extra duties as assigned, and you did a great job informing the public and keeping them up to date on school district-related matters. So now, please, Dr. Hag, I'll start with you.
Sorry, I was just indicating to Ms. Mitchell that I'd be happy to start. I just wanted to, so to remind people that our, our September update will be coming, but I also wanted to reiterate because I know that some members of the community, you know, they may not have children in the school district, they may not be, be receiving these updates. So I just wanted to point out that on the district website, if you go to the School Board tab, then there's a link that says School Board Monthly Updates, and that will show you, show anyone in the community how they can sign up for those updates. So it's just, we're, we're always looking to make sure that we're communicating to the whole community and not just to the, the families that are in the district.
Thank you. Mrs. Mitchell?
That was perfect, Dr. Hag. That's exactly what I was going to say.
All right. I think that completes our collateral assignment reports. New business now, right? So we'll turn it over to Mr. Rogers.
So as Mr. Des Noiers has had mentioned, we're, we will now conduct a poll vote to elect the PSBA officers for 2022. Each board member has been provided the biographies of the candidates. I'll call on each board member and go through each position. Please state the candidate that you would, you are choosing or state that you're abstaining. So first up, we have--
So hold on, I just want to say I'm abstaining from the East Zone Representative Vote because I'm, I'm a candidate, so.
So the first position I'll poll the board on is the president-elect. So we'll start with Dr. Hag.
David Chap.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Sabrina Backer.
Mr. War Savage.
David Chap.
Mr. Neal?
David Chap.
Ms. Williams?
Sabrina Backer.
Mr. Fields?
David Chap.
Mrs. Mitchell?
David Chap.
Mrs. Curry?
Sabrina Backer.
Mr. Brown?
David Chap.
Thank you. Next up is the Vice President position. Dr. Hag?
Allison Mathis, and I'll just point out that she is unopposed, just for the public's information.
Mr. Des Noiers?
Allison Mathis.
Mr. War Savage?
Allison Mathis.
Mr. Neal?
Allison Mathis.
Mrs. Williams?
Allison Mathis.
Mr. Fields?
Allison Mathis.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Allison Mathis.
Mrs. Curry?
Allison Mathis.
Mr. Brown?
Tough choice. Hmm, Allison Mathis.
Thank you. We now have the East Zone Representative. The, there is one candidate, Mr. Edward Brown. I'll start with Dr. Hag.
Our very own Mr. Brown.
Mr. Des Noiers?
Our very own President Edward Brown.
Mr. War Savage?
Mr. President, Mr. Edward Brown.
Mr. Neal?
Since there are no Eagle fans listed as candidates, I'll go with Edward Brown.
See me after the meeting, Mr. Neal.
Mrs. Williams?
Edward Brown.
Mr. Fields?
Man, I can't top David Neal. Edward Brown.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Edward Brown.
Mrs. Curry?
Edward Brown.
Mr. Brown?
Am I allowed to vote? Okay, okay. Edward Brown.
All right. Next up, we have the PSBA Insurance Trust Trustees. You are allowed to vote for up to three of the candidates. So Dr. Hag?
I will support the three candidates on the docket. Richard Frericks, William LaCoffe, Nathan Maines.
Mr. Des Noiers?
I will also support the three candidates on the ballot. Richard Frericks, William LaCoffe, and Nathan Maines.
Mr. War Savage?
I support Richard Frerick, William LaCoffe, and Nathan Maines.
Mr. Neal?
Frericks, LaCoffe, and Maines.
Mrs. Williams?
Frericks, LaCoffe, and Maines.
Mr. Fields?
Can't you say ditto? No? Okay. Frericks, LaCoffe, and Maines.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Frericks, LaCoffe, and Maines.
Mrs. Curry?
Frericks, LaCoffe, and Maines.
Mr. Brown?
Frerick, LaCoffe, and Maines as well.
And the final position tonight would be School Board Secretaries Forum Steering Committee. Again, you can vote for up to three of the four candidates. Dr. Hag?
Jennifer Davidson, Deanna Langkenees, and Beth Ann Ziegler.
Mr. Des Noiers?
Deanna Langkenees, Beth Ann Ziegler, and Jamie Lynn Zimmerowski.
Mr. War Savage?
Deana Langkenees, Beth Ann Ziegler, Jamie Lynn Zimmerowski.
Mr. Neal?
Langkenees, Ziegler, and Zimmerowski.
Mrs. Williams?
Langkenees, Ziegler, and Zimmerowski.
Mr. Fields?
Davidson, Langkenees, Ziegler.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Davidson, Langkenees, and Ziegler.
Mrs. Curry?
Davidson, Langkenees, and Zimmerowski.
Mr. Brown?
Davidson, Langkenees, and Ziegler.
That concludes the voting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rogers, for conducting that. We are now at the time for public, for the public hearing. We will call on Upper Darby residents who sign in to address the board in order, in the order in which they signed in, followed by email and phone comments. We would ask that you come forward, give your name and address, and present your comments in the three-minute time limit. I think Mr. Rogers will keep time, correct? In accordance with Policy 903, the time allotted for general comments, both in-person and submitted comments, will not exceed one hour, and that's for the total--
Point of order, President Brown, you said Upper Darby residents. I just want to make sure it's clear, it's Upper Darby School District residents, which would include Millburn, Borough, and Clifton Heights Borough.
Yes, I believe that's correct. Mr. Berman, you concur? Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll start with Mr. James Burrows, please.
Jim Burrows, 447 Hampshire Road, Drexel Hill. Do I start now? Time?
Yes.
Hi, I'm coming here tonight because I have a fair amount of concerns about critical race theory being snuck into our school district. And I'm going to explain how I came to this conclusion. Last year, there was a fundamental shift in your language from equality to equity, which is straight out of Kimberly Kendrisaw's Critical Race Theory. Along with that is other terms such as implicit bias, and it's also other things such as systematic racism. And I'm hearing these terms a lot. So I'm going to bring this back, and I did a lot of research into this. It seems like this is a phenomenon coming down from the state, and there is funding tied to this, and it's through their Equity and Inclusion Department. That is also being propagated through the student, I mean, the teachers' union, right? Public, the PSEA. And I know that because they're having a seminar on October 4th, Nice White Parents. And I've asked that I could actually attend that one because I really want to know what they're going to have to say. Because I think, personally, I think I'm a nice white parent. So far, I've not been able to get in. So maybe you guys could help me get in that because I would really like to attend that workshop. Anyone that believes me can break in. That now culminated into Upper Darby rising. So now we're talking about our school district specifically. If you read the 78-page document, and I suggest everyone does, you will find it littered with implicit bias, systematic racism, and of course, equity. I'm going to be very clear. It is toxic. Critical race theory puts race at the center of a student's identity. It is absolutely toxic, and it is creating the system of racism that it's purported to prevent. You are the system. If you believe in critical race theory, you are the racist and you're instituting racism in our schools. So I appreciate everyone that took time out for a very long meeting with the administrators to, so I could air my concerns. I look forward to working with you in the future to make sure that we are being equal to our students and are not looking at equal outcomes, which is what equity is. We're making sure that they have equal footing to compete. Anyway, my time is up. Lot to say in three minutes. And again, I look forward to looking forward with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Burrows. Next, Kathleen Kenny?
Hi, Kathleen Kenny, 504 Wild Avenue, Drexel Hill, PA. I'm here tonight to talk about one of my passions. Does anyone on the school board know about our Best Buddies program? No, you don't because nothing is being done. Best Buddies was proposed at the June 18, 2019 School Board. And you can look on the school board docs, and it was proposed by Kate Flanagan and Amanda Rementor. What was proposed at the school board meeting never came to fruition. There was a PowerPoint presentation, and it said, once a month, the entire club would meet outside of school hours for different events. September, I get to know you, new buddy social. That never happened. October, football game. That did happen. November, help with Thanksgiving drive. Never happened. December, holiday get-together. Never happened. Weekly meetings of the leadership will plan the second half of the year in 2019-2020. Never happened. No Best Buddies were paired. It was nothing. Now, Best Buddies is not a club. It's a program. It's an international program. And I had a Zoom meeting on December 22 with Ms. Simone, Mr. Marshlech, and Ms. Flanagan about the Best Buddies program and how it's nothing. I mean, it's a disgrace. It's Best Buddies program. One of our things is unity. It's bringing our special needs children together and our general ed children together. There should have been a school assembly, not a club. This is not a club. It should be a school assembly with the Pennsylvania director of Best Buddies. Havreford School District has a wonderful Best Buddies program. Lower Marion, we want to be the number one school district in PA. Let's talk about unity and incorporating a great Best Buddies program like all the other great school districts in the area. So when I talked to Ms. Simone and Mr. Marshlech and Ms. Flanagan, you know, they, Ms. Simone said, well, I'll talk, you know, to the staff and see if, you know, we can get other staff members on board. I don't think that ever took place. I really don't think that meeting took place because nothing has happened. And today came out that there, you know, you can sign up for the Best Buddies Club. No, you don't sign up for a Best Buddies Club. There is vetting involved. You have to talk to the kids that are volunteering, make sure that they're in it. This is a friendship. It's a getting together. You know, Mrs. Mitchell, three minutes is up. Well, unfortunately, it, it's a disgrace. That's all I can say. Somebody on this board needs to take this program into their hands and get the right people on it.
Thank you for your comments. Alona Shaboni or Shabani? Alona Shaboni, Shabani? I'm sorry. Huh? Shabani, got it. Sorry, Alona Shabani.
Alona Shabani, 290 Charles Avenue, Drexel Hill, PA. I'm here to talk about masking. I filed the right to know end of August 2021. I specifically inquired about masks. I requested to see data that proves masks do not cause psychological or health issues. The answer was no record evidence within the district. It's been 18 months, and it's quite concerning to see that the district is following these mandates without any data to show its community. You basically follow the mandates, which by the way are now laws blindly. This to me as a parent shows that you do not care about our children. If you did care, you'd be questioning this unlawful mandate and do some research. There are many studies that have been done all over the world that prove masking the kids does cause health and psychological issues. Where is the transparency they keep talking about? We, the parents, are very worried about our children and the law on the side of the deck of masks. Why isn't the district showing the parents the signs and data that you are following to mandate masks on the kids? Every time we question you about masking, the answer is we are following the orders. There's nothing else we can do. If you are required to follow these mandates, please make sure you are making an informed decision and you see both sides of the picture. Don't just make the kids wear masks because you are, you are told to do so. Our kids should not be put in the middle of whatever agenda the board is in mind. They deserve to have a great education without masks on their faces. The focus should be on our kids' education that will make them succeed in life and not be left behind like you did already by closing the schools down for over a year. Why isn't the district offering mask exemptions or waivers to the parents like many other school districts are doing? Why aren't mask exemptions honored? Again, to me, seems it is not about the kids' health. It's about you following the orders, no matter what the consequences are. Well, the consequences are our children, and we, the parents, do not want our kids to suffer anymore. We elected you. You work for us. You need to listen to us. Stop ignoring our concerns and make masking optional. As of today, there is no law passed in Pennsylvania that makes masking legal. Is the district accepting full legal responsibility by forcing masking and any health issues caused by it? Start masking our kids. Please start listening to the parents. Masks should always remain optional. It's our kids, our health choices. Your job is to educate them. Again, masking should be optional. They deserve to breathe freely. Please do your research.
Rainy, I'm sorry, Ms. Rainey.
I guess I'm pretty true. Anyway, none of my wild screens would I imagine being up here talking about my children's, like, God-given right to breathe for our children. If people like you and the teachers' unions and the teachers were so serious, weren't so serious about complying with kickbacks or being little bears or weren't scared to lose your jobs, I highly doubt any of you would be going along with this absolute ridiculousness. Actually, I'm sure of it. If the person I talk to in real life knows something isn't right, yet they comply and they expect me to as well. People are scared and confused, but we don't have to, you don't have to, sorry, you would have to be a complete moron to realize that this is not about COVID-19 anymore. I don't know how people can possibly sleep in like knowing they are enforcing a mandate that cuts oxygen levels to a developing child's brain by 20%. And if I were forced to, oh, I'm sorry, if I was forced to do this mandate, I would have resigned by now. This mandate is never going to end because of elected officials like yourself continuing to uphold discussing mandates. You know, it's correct to all of our rights, liberties, and pursuit of happiness, and not many people are happy. The U.S. Department of Education bullies the State Board of Education, and the State Department then bullies the schools, now the schools are bullying the children. This is what the Health and Safety Plan is all about, and I find it ironic because you don't encourage the kids to bully each other, not needing my example. I'm going to do a quick example of the real people who are pushing their children to do masks, and they are these are the people who don't want it to end. Child is 66,000 times more likely to be sold to human traffickers than you guys could COVID-19. In addition, the masks assist that in being transported undetected and unidentified to anyone. It took under three minutes to throw a shirt over her tank, put tape over her mouth, turn her mask to the white-- her mask to the white side, tuck her hat into it, or her hair into a hat, put shorts on over her pink pants. You wouldn't even recognize your own child after three minutes, and you'd be searching for your face, your missing child, in a sea of masks. I've come to the conclusion that what the public schools are doing by design is doctoring our children to follow in our liberal communist agenda while keeping them dumb enough by cutting oxygen off to their brain. They can't make decisions for themselves, and they can't question the unconstitutional mandates we are placing on them. We're not in a state of emergency anymore. This is a violation of our constitutional rights, and we will continue to fight. Thank you very much.
Chuck, I don't want to butcher your last name. Can you, when, can you pronounce your last name?
At the same time.
You need to say your, state your address, state your name, let's state your address as well.
437 Lombardi.
Thank you.
Students in every school of every race, ancestry, native land, gender, orientation, deserve to see a role model, teacher and more, who share traits with them. Such adults are assured, reassured, an inspiration, a support, and a refuge for students who feel different or deemed in any way. And then you skip down here, you said, Upper Darby must exponentially increase its recruitment of education of color. Doesn't, it would, I never thought that I, I would need to, to find a teacher with the same color, skin color as my children, so to, so it would make my children comfortable. I never thought my, my children had to feel that way. Teacher is teacher. I need the school board rethink this document that you, you sent it out. We don't need to exponentially hire more teacher of color. We need to strive for excellent teacher. I don't need my students walking to school and come home and I have to ask them, did you have a, a teacher with, you know, with some color? What, what color? I don't ask my student that. I mentioned my, my child back. Why would you even send this out? It's insulting. Teacher needs to be excellent teacher regardless of their color. I hope you listen to that. Asian American like me, I don't need that. Stop doing that. Upper Darby Rising document needs to be scrapped and redo. Take that language out. We need to hire more, more excellent teacher, not teacher of color. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Billy Kaplan. Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Bill Kaplan. I live at 241 Highland Avenue in Upper Darby. Thank you for opening this up again, Mr. Brown, Dr. McGary, everyone who works for the school district. I guess I just wanted to start by saying, I start with the place where you are either a public servant or.
And you are doing what you are either hired to do or elected to do, which is serve with integrity and making the best decisions. So I just start from there. And I really can't wait to get back to the places where, you know, the Best Buddy Program, like, this is what should be at the center of this, of what kind of programs our kids need, what kind of buildings they should go to school in. That's where we come in as parents, to hold your feet to the fire, so to speak. I believe in this idea of protecting our students against this COVID virus with masks, with distancing, with every precaution available, and I appreciate that. And I also appreciate the kind of initiatives to bring our school district to reflect the people who you are serving, the families and the communities. The way we are teaching our children about equity really matters, because until the systemic racism doesn't exist, then we are having to educate people about its effect on people's bodies and its effect on people's careers. So, yes, we want everyone to be seen as humans, but at this point, that's not happening. It just doesn't exist. And as someone who is of also a mixed race, I believe that this is a bold step, because many people are under this impression that what this is, is doing harm to our children, but what it's really doing is bringing them the opportunity that I fought for as a veteran, and that my father fought for as a veteran, to all people who deserve it. So I just appreciate being here. I appreciate holding you to the fire. I appreciate parents who bring in programs like the Best Buddy. I've never heard about it. I want that. And that's the kind of dialogue we should be having here, is what we need in this school. And we believe, in my family, that fairness and opportunities are what brought my parents to this country and my wife's parents to this country. And we will fight for it, and we will appreciate all the things that you're doing well, and we will hold you to the fire when you're not doing it well. And so I, again, appreciate what Damian said also about, this is the first time we're all together, because I need to see faces and eyes and be with people who are from my community. So again, I've been lacking. I haven't been to many board meetings this last year. I've been part of the Upper Darby Rising, but I, because of time, I had to drop out. But it's only because of commitments, it's not because of a lack of need or interest. So again, I appreciate being able to say these things. This is democracy, and we need all these voices to be heard, but we need to start from the place that you are in a place of integrity, you are standing in a place of public servants, as well as me as a parent loving my children. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Next on our list is Michael Benton. Please state your name and address. Yes.
I got them. Mike Benton, 255 North Linden Avenue. Follow the guidance, follow the guidance, since we've been hearing that since this pandemic began. CDC, the World Health Organization, and also the Surgeon General at one point in time said that masks was not effective against the COVID-19 virus. I say that to say that the guidance out there, we have to be objective, right? And we can't get tied and bogged down to political preferences, not when it comes to our kids. I understand everybody have a job to do, and, you know, the culture of get down and lay down is rampant. I get it. But when it comes to our kid, we really got to step outside the box. Sometimes, we have to question things. A lot of the things that's coming down the pipeline just don't make sense. So us, as school board, as administrators, as parents, you know, we really, we got to be the ones to say, hey, this don't sound right. Maybe, you know, and a lot of the stuff that's coming down is recommending, you know, recommendations, right? We don't have to go 100% of what they're saying, right? And like I said, I get it. It's kind of hard to be that stand-up person and stand on your own, but we got to do this. There's, there's no turning back. You know, we, we thought this pandemic was going to end, what, a couple months ago? You know, they said, oh, everybody's good, we don't, we don't need the mask. Everybody's good, just go get the, the COVID shot, and everybody's good, and we're going to go about our way. But look at us now. Come on, guys. At some point, we got to say enough is enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have on our list is Foshal Ahmad, Ahmed, sorry. And I guess, Mr. Ahmed is not here. So Rhonda, I'll leave it to you to conduct the next part of it, the next comments, the email and the phone comments. I'll turn it over to you, please.
Our first comment that was received by email is from Al Balde, located at 5044 Marvine Avenue in Drexel Hill. This comment was received on the 10th at 3:20, and it is a general comment. Comment begins, "Mr. McGary, you are the Superintendent of Schools for the Upper Darby School District. You need to take full responsibility for all activity and inactivity of the school district. You are paid a high salary by the Upper Darby School District residents, and you need to perform with high-quality performance. It seems that there has been virtually no activity at the site all summer long. It's becoming an eyesore and a waste of school tax dollars by the inactive equipment just sitting there. The situation devalues the neighborhood. It's a disgrace. Please answer all of the following questions."
Construction contract signed for the Iranian school project. What is the full original amount of this construction contract? CDC has not approved this project, but we are paying a contract to be paying for construction. Number two.
Date of mobilization for this construction. Number three, what construction work has been performed to date? Number four, why was there no or very little construction work performed all summer long? Number five, what is the cost per day to the Upper Darby School District taxpayer for all the inactivity and dormant equipment at the site during the last four months? Number six, what is the projected additional cost to the Upper Darby School District taxpayer beyond the original contracted amount?
Rhonda, hold on one second.
Sure, yes.
Can't hear, thank you. Please continue.
Continue with the comment. "This email is being forwarded to you several days before the meeting, so you will have plenty of time to respond and provide thorough answers to all six points above. Thank you. End of comment." I understand that Dr. McGary responded by email and addressed each of the six questions. Our next comment is from Sahida Mayfield, located at 249 La Carra Drive, Lansdowne Avenue, I'm sorry, Lansdowne, PA. The comment was received on the 14th at 4:03 PM via email, and this is a general comment. The comment begins, "I review the Comprehensive Equity Initiative and Comprehensive Equity Plan Proposal 2018 through 2023. I observed that previous board meetings summer extended the ELL, English Language Learner Services, were discussed. Although these are essential services and programs, I am also concerned about services offered to general and specially educated students throughout the school year. Equity and culture are very important in our school district due to the diversity of our student population. My concern is that all students be supported and feel comfortable in their learning experience slash environment. I wanted to know if the school district has any plans to implement or celebrate National Hispanic Month, which starts September 15 through October 15. This celebration would be of histories, cultures, and contributions of Hispanic-American citizens. I would like to see more activities, programs, and events that embrace the cultures of all of our students. My daughter at Upper Darby High is a part of the Black Student Union. I feel it is important for all students to experience their culture being represented in their school. Just as students should be aware of the different cultures, teachers should be culturally aware as well. Will the school district offer culturally competent curriculum professional development for teachers? As educators, in order for our students to accept and embrace different cultures, educators have to model that acceptance. I just wanted to follow up with my concerns or student safety traveling to and from school. My daughter attends Beverly Hills Middle School since the school year has started. There has been fighting amongst students several times during the school week. As a community, we have to work together to make sure all students are safe. End of comment." Excuse me. Our next comment is from Joe Bonner, located at 5016 Marvine Avenue in Drexel Hill. The comment was received on the 14th at 4:09 PM via email, and this is a general comment. The comment begins, "Today at 3 o'clock, there was a traffic nightmare due to the addition of some temporary cones placed at various locations to restrict parking. A gridlock developed at St. Dot's, students were crossing, excuse me, as St. Dot's students were crossing Vermont at Marvine Ave., and cars were backing up on Marvine Ave. I was almost run over as impatient parents turned up Marvine away from Vermont at a dangerous speed. Thankfully, no students were injured. This will be the quote-unquote norm when the expansion is completed." End of comment. And President Brown, that ends our comments for this evening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Buford. Okay. Dr. McGary, I think you have some comments. Thank you.
Yeah, just, just to Ms. Kenny's, Chris, how are you? Ms. Kenny's comment. I, I do want to say that I know there was a presentation made under the leadership of Mrs. Simone in 2019. I will certainly say that.
The board doesn't have to take on that responsibility. The administration will, as far as the Best Buddy Program is concerned.
I know Mr. Marshlech and Mrs. Simone put a tremendous amount of time and effort into the high school, and I know that her heart's in the right spot to make all these things happen. It's just a monster job here at the high school, and I know Mr. Marshlech does a tremendous job as well. So I'll, I'll make it a point to have a conversation with Mrs. Simone and Mr. Marshlech, but I do want to say that Mrs. Simone did put together a presentation in 2019 here for the board on the Best Buddies Program, so it's not as though Mrs. Simone is not concerned or not interested in the program, and I just wanted to make sure that the board's been way aware of that.
Is there a motion for the adjournment of the meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming out, everyone, and thank you for attending online if you did.